Right, so. Thank you very much. And. For inviting me and for the opportunity to give this talk and. Usually I give. Technical talks. But I noticed that this session was already. Had many technical talks. Heavily logic based and what I. Feel or felt is that. What what logic deserves. In the world, but also in Korea is more promotion of logic to other mathematicians, to other scientists and to the general public. So. One aspect is of course. Doing deep theoretical studies and investigations, thinking and then presenting that to other logicians. But my purpose here right now and today is kind of to try to broaden the audience of people and to increase appreciation of logic beyond the realm of logicians only. So please bear with me when my talk is deliberately not going to be on the technical side, but more on the side of advertising logic by itself, so. So they question. The purpose, the use of logic, logic is often considered too theoretical particularly by applied mathematicians, incomprehensible and esoteric and is that really the case? Superficially, this is an understandable objection because if you look at. Publications in logic, then they look like this and this throws off not just arbitrary scientists, but also. General mathematicians, although these are just the rules of inference that every mathematician uses, just mathematicians tend to use these rules implicitly and intuitively. When logic formalizes this, then I took the liberty of taking a screenshot of. Some talks that were given earlier today and again it. Arguably, other mathematicians will find it hard to even understand the statement of the theorems, not to mention the proofs. And here's another example, so please don't be offended because I'm on your side. I am a logician, but I'm also here today, I want to make a deliberate effort in trying to advertise logic, not to you guys, but to other mathematicians and to computer scientists, I think computer scientists are very suitable audience to convey to the use and applications of logic. So that's why I chose the title of my talk, so much logic underlies nowadays computers. They were in order to raise awareness that all the computers that we use all the time these days and the computers that are the subject of investigation by computer scientists heavily build upon and use logic, although people are not really aware of that, so let me try to. Raise that awareness here and now and today. So that being said, let's start and I want to start with a. Report on an earlier publication like 20 years ago. There was a publication on the unusual effectiveness of logic in computer science. So the purpose of that was basically the same as what I'm trying to do here and now to raise awareness on computer scientists of the benefits or as it's called here effectiveness of logic. And this paper was written by some indeed of famous logician. Joe Halpern, Robert Harper, Neil Iverman, the Turing Award winner. Kulaitis, Moshe Vardy and Victor Biano. And in this paper, there were several chapters, for example, one chapter about descriptive complexity. Starting with Fagin's theorem, a structure, a set of structures is in NP, you know, the famous P versus NP millennium problem. So that's something that every computer scientist is well aware of and that even can be advertised to people on the street, right millennium prize problem P versus NP. And Fagin's theorem for phrases that millennium prize problem in terms of logic specifically in terms of second order existential logic of a set of finite structures. So NP is equal to second order logic existential only quantified formulas. So that's one way of selling the use of logic as an approach to solve the millennium problem. Another quote from this chapter is Iverman's theorem from 1988. Let me characterize in parallel computation, so CRM means concurrent random access machine. T of N steps, running time, parallel running time is the same as what can be expressed in first order logic with T of N quantifier alternations, so again. Deep properties of complexity, deep complexity characterized in terms of logic. Quantum parallel time is quantified depth. And another quote from that chapter from that work is about several works that appeared simultaneously by Iverman and by Vardy, all about basically the same question, namely. A problem is in polynomial time, if and only if it is described in first order logic with the addition of the least fixed point operator, so again. Question in complexity theory, polynomial time. Characterized in terms of logic this time using the least fixed point operator. So this is one way of conveying the importance of logic as an approach to solve the millennium problem. One chapter from this paper. So another chapter from this paper, other chapters from these papers elaborate on the use of logic as a database query language, well, database is something that everybody uses, right? And telling people that databases are heavily built on logic. Helps emphasize the importance of logic. Programming language, again, something that every computer scientist use and is closely related to type theory again from logic. Then there's a so-called zero knowledge proof and. The. Right, communication protocols. In in using the. PCP theorem and another approach to solve the millennium problem and reasoning about knowledge and not knowledge. That's the word of Joe Halpern, for example, is also formalized in terms of logic. And then there's the question of automated verification. In this paper, it was focused on automatic verification on semiconductor designs. So on bits and finite structures, Simon is an expert on automated verification of continuous computation with continuous data and particularly of real numbers. So again, here logic and specifically proof theory plays a crucial role in automatic verification of computer programs. So this is a basically a recap of this 2001 work. And what I want to do today is elaborate on some three other aspects, maybe even more accessible to ordinary people beyond mathematicians, beyond computer scientists, where logic has played a crucial role in developing computers and where logic will play a role in future computing. So namely three aspects and here you see this kind of dictionary. On the one side left is logic, on the right side is computer. So one is a Boolean logic that had led to digital circuits, that's the past. Then contemporary is a structures in the sense of model theory that corresponds to abstract data types in object-oriented programming languages. And finally, the axiomatic method as a general paradigm of logic corresponds to information hiding in computer science, so. More close connections and arguably even more basic ones. Than the ones expanded on in the previous paper. Yeah, and understandable to mathematicians and to computer scientists, at least maybe even to the average person on the street, the people who get to decide. For example, funding for universities and departments and helpful also to emphasize the importance of logic, for example, to yeah, to to other departments, right? When there's struggle about funding within a university being able to tell. Why logic is important to non-mathematicians and non-computer scientists can be very helpful. So first point is about the correspondence between Boolean logic and digital circuits. And again, I'm, you all know this, right? So I'm preaching to the choir here, but this talk is really actually targeted as other audience, so that's why I'm recording it honestly. So let me remind of the works by George Boole in the 19th century, right? So that's what like 150 years ago, an investigation of the laws of thought, right? So he was formalizing laws of thinking and laws of arguing, for example, in court. And he put that into what we nowadays would call an algebraic framework, right? The term algebra was not really coined at that time, so mathematics and especially algebra. And that. Yeah, like 100 years later, that and turned out to be extremely useful in the design of digital circuits because this also process what we would nowadays call Boolean information, namely bits, truth values zero and one. So yeah, that Boole's work on logic from logic underlies modern digital circuits, that's the past. Then second example is about the correspondence between structures and abstract data types. Now, logicians know all about structures and arguably also mathematicians implicitly and intuitively know what a structure is when they talk about, for example, groups, group theory. That's a that's a class of structures, right? And here's some examples of a structure Z two or the field with two elements. That's a mathematical structure and that obviously corresponds to the computer abstract data type bit. And why is it an abstract data type? Because when we talk about bits in computer science, we don't care about how the bit is implemented. This could be, for example, in. In CMOS where zero bit zero and bit one correspond to zero volt, zero up to one volt and bit one corresponds to two up to three volts, but it could be also other technology, other. Silicon technology or gallium arsenid technology, it could be an optical computer. It could be anytime how a bit is implemented and abstract data type. Ignores how it's implemented as long as it satisfies the condition of a of a bit. And that's what it corresponds to a structure. Moving on to another example, structure than the structure of natural numbers as axemized by the piano axioms. Now in computers, when you talk to engineers, electrical engineers, a common ways to. Correspond that to byte, that means eight bits, but of course byte have this infamous wraparound effect that after 255 plus one equals zero, so that's not the corresponding abstract data type. Neither is long integer, which also has a wraparound effects only later for larger values. And that's my modern. Programming languages offer an abstract data type that is called, for example, big integer in Java or in Python. And if your favorite programming language does not offer such an abstract data type, then you can include the library like GMP, which provides this abstract data type. And the point here is or the two points to be made here is first big integer or GMP integer corresponds to the mathematical data type of natural numbers. There's no wraparound, it's a perfect coincidence. And secondly, how this data type is implemented, it's not a hardware data type anymore. It's a software data type and how this is implemented in software does not matter. That's the point of having an abstract data type to be independent of the implementation. For example, integer multiplication could be implemented using long multiplication from high school or it could be implemented using Karatuba or Tomb algorithm or Cook algorithm or Fast Fourier or whatever. But it doesn't matter as long as it behaves exactly the same way as mathematical integers does. Abstract data type correspond to structure now moving on to my personal favorite. That's the structure of real numbers. Which again is not course, not correspond to the hardware data type of float or of double, but it corresponds to the data type real provided by one of my favorite. The computer libraries, namely the IRAM library, because again this data type real. And corresponds exactly to the mathematical structure of real numbers, whereas floating point numbers and double precision numbers all have these rounding errors and do not correspond to that. And the real data type, how it's implemented. Behind the scenes is a does not matter, should not matter, but there are other libraries that also provide such a data type, for example. The real lip by Panimir Lumbov also provides that using entirely different implementation. But it's an abstract data type, so the implementation does not and must not matter. And we could continue and extend that list to other structures like higher order structures, classes of continuous functions, classes of measurable functions. Soplev function. In the mathematical side and corresponding abstract data types, like for example, Simon has implemented together with a student, the structure of the Grassmannian. Family of subspaces of a vector space and has turned that into an abstract data type building on the real data type. So the lesson here is, yeah, so logic and particularly the concept of a structure from model theory corresponds. Closely to abstract data type, software implemented data types beyond hardware in the computer realms or another way of how logic. I'm not sure whether this is, this has been explicit or whether this is a coincidence, but the the correspondence is really extremely strong and maybe eerie or unusual as the 2001 paper authors called it. So now moving on to the third correspondence, which builds on that is the axiomatic method. In mathematics, in in logic, right? Corresponds to information hiding as a recent paradigm in computer programming, right? So if you recall back, so the first programming languages did not allow for abstract data types, did not allow for information hiding, any variable was globally visible, for example, in BASIC. That's how I started programming, should declare a variable, then it is visible everywhere. And only later, for example, with the introduction of Pascal programming language, the concept of information hiding turned out to be beneficial, right? Not knowing ignorance is bliss, if you like, and the same is illustrated by this three. Abstract data types that I mentioned in the previous slide, as I said, how a bit is implemented does not matter, must not matter. Similarly, what the so or for moving on, for example, integers, right? What is the definition of integers? This is a construction, for example. By. John Neumann, right? John Neumann constructed integers built on building on set theory, right? Then there's an way of. Yeah, anyway, there's various ways of how to construct integers. As there are various ways of implementing integers in computer science, right? I mentioned the different, for example, multiplication algorithms and how these algorithms work should not matter, must not matter, similarly mathematics, arguing about integers, number theory should not, must not, cannot matter how the integers have been introduced in one textbook or another one. And that is even more true for the real numbers, for example, real numbers. Most engineers and physicists don't even know how the real numbers are constructed. They only operate, calculate on real numbers. But there are several ways of constructing the real numbers on top of the natural numbers, right? For example, you could consider equivalence classes of Cauchy sequences of fractions, that is of fractions of natural numbers, or you could consider great Dedekind cuts, so various ways of constructing the real numbers mathematically. But in the end, what really matters is the properties that is the axiom satisfied by the thus constructed set of real numbers and similarly how the data type of real numbers is implemented in IRAM or in real lip does not matter, should not matter, must not matter to the user programmer who is doing calculations with his abstract data type of real numbers. So that's my first, my third point, the course illustrating the correspondence between logic and computer science and this one are actually also already looking in the future. So we've moved from the past bull and bit to the present natural numbers and integers to the future real numbers and and the real data type and beyond that. And to conclude the future. So these are the three examples I've collected here. And I'd like to emphasize that all these examples basically as our computers built on discrete data, right? Those they built on bits, which are discrete and bits can be combined in a finite way. And Boolean logic is also finitary binary logic, but the future. My pet, my research area is to develop computer science of continuous data beyond the discrete, beyond the discretized realm. And if you look at this table, the three examples, the second one about structures already pertains. Extends beyond the discrete realm, right? So we talked about structure of real numbers, structure of Grassmannian, structure of fields. Spaces of continuous function spaces of integrable functions, Soplev spaces. And similarly, abstract data types in principle could also be device, have been devised for real numbers for Grassmannians and we should continue doing that also for the higher function spaces. Similarly, for the axiomatic method also applies to continuous data as well as to discrete, but. Low level, that's where we need to kind of. Step up and device and I would like to encourage you to device correspondence for that. And arguably, on the logical side, good logic is an example of non-discrete logic. There are various types of good logic and on the computer side that could be analog circuit. So that's what I can imagine correspondence beyond the discrete realm. And that's all I wanted to say, yes, it seems time is running out. So let me conclude and thank you very much for the opportunity to advertise logic beyond. Logicians advertise logic to mathematicians, advertise logic to computer scientists. Thank you very much and I'm here for your questions and discussions.
Okay, any question? I have one question. In the in the last page. To to realize continuous continuity, I I think continued the concept of continuity is related to the concept of infinity, something. But my question is, it is possible to realize a concept of infinity in computer science. How to realize infinity in computer science?
That's an excellent question and I get that question all the time because people often believe it's not possible to do that. But the implementations of IRAM library and implementation of the real lip library demonstrate that it is possible and seven knows a lot about how to do that. This is kind of breaking the the force barrier. This is beyond the purpose of abstract data type, but let me just say that. You know, like integers, mathematical integers, when they're implemented on a computer, they use a variable number of bytes, right? In order to avoid the wraparound effects and how many bytes the implementation users gets adjusted dynamically, right? So long integers may be four bytes or eight bytes, but the long in the the big in data structure uses a variable number of bytes dynamically and determined in the runtime. And similarly, the real number data type as implemented in IRAM or in real lip basically uses a variable number of double precision floating point numbers, but hides from the user how many it uses, so that from the user perspective, it seems like it's indistinguishable from exact computation, but in practice it's always finite number, but a variable number. Has that answered your very good question?
Yes, maybe, and and maybe this is the similar question, but. When we construct the integer. Then we use equivalent relation on natural numbers and but you say the. One way of constructing their number is using Cauchy sequence. And Cauchy thing was. To 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 describe a Cauchy sequence, we needed. Maybe this is discussion is very similar, but when we want to describe Cauchy sequence, then we need infinitely many place over two. Or. I wonder how to solve this problem to demonstrate to.
Right. Yes, again, excellent question. And this is a turns out to be closely related actually to constructive mathematicians again, a soft field of logic. In constructive mathematicians mathematics. There's no equality, right? There's only inequality and similarly when writing. There's only inequality and similarly, when writing programs in IRAM. Uh you must not test for equality, you can only test for inequality. And that's of course something that every numerical scientist has uh has known implicitly all the time, right? Don't test for equality, but now we can argue and put that on the formal foundation. Beyond the intuition uh that uh numerical mathematicians have used all the time. Very good question.
Thank you.
And again, did I, did I mention that someone is an expert in all these things? If not, let let me, let me emphasize it, no, okay.
I I also have one question, may I, may I ask some question? Because it is already over uh half hour, so is it okay to?
Uh, maybe, maybe we have, originally, we have one hours and thirty minutes.
Ah, I see.
So I think you can.
Uh.
Go ahead.
Uh my my question is, uh in the first part of in your talk, you give a. Uh some some algorithm is comfortable in polynomial time, uh if and only if it is describing post-odyssey. So. So my question is, oh yes, yes, the the in the last line. The by result of Iman and Vardy, a problem is in polynomial time, if and it is described in post-odyssey with the addition. With fixed point operator, so my question is, uh. If we change the, it is describable in data logic, in what happened in the uh website. So my question, if we change, uh some problem is describable in the data logic. Then such problem, which class of complexity class, which complexity class this problem is belongs to?
That's a very good question, that's a technical question and that's beyond my expertise, to be honest. Um I think there's, there's a chance that people working on descriptive descriptive complexity theory. Know the answer to your question, but I don't.
So and then, uh is there any development or advance on the uh? Some model theoretic study on the structure of structure describing better logic?
Yes, so um there's a work by Nobel Pining. Um who's an Austrian logician uh working in Japan these days. And he has written several uh deep papers on on the structure of good, characterizing good logics. So it's plural. And its properties depending on what is the range of values of truth values in this generalized logic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh okay, then, thank, thank, thanks for the speaker, again.
My pleasure, my honor, thank you.